Good evening and welcome to Village Board Meeting, the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, September 14. If you are watching this live on Monday, September 14, and not on a tape version later, we invite you to call in if you have any comments or questions. The number is 769-1677. You can also tune in both live or using on-demand video at PCTV76.org. So you have two ways to see Village Board Meetings, either on cable TV or via the new website that PCTV has been rolling out over the last few months. So our next regular meeting is next Monday, September 21. We have two regular meetings in a row because of the change in schedule this month with Labor Day, and we will begin that at 8:00 p.m. with a work session at 7:00 p.m. And a few announcements and comments I wanted to make. The first was, as we all know, this week was the September 11th anniversary, the eighth anniversary of the tragedy at the World Trade Towers, and there were ceremonies all over the county, but two in particular are worthy of note. There was a ceremony at the Mount Pleasant Community Center that was attended by about 300 people and was a very moving ceremony. Earlier in the day, at noon time, there was a ceremony run by the county that was at the Kensco Dam Plaza at the September 11 memorial that has been built there, and it was worthy of note for several reasons, one of which was that it was an extremely nice ceremony. But the other thing was that the ceremony was connected to the presentation of the President's Call to Service Awards, which is a national program, an effort to try to connect the service and sacrifice that went along with 9/11 to a positive reinforcement of the service to community that many people offer. And there were five county residents that received the President's Call to Service Award, and one of them was Alan Shapiro, who lives here in Pleasantville. Alan is a remarkable guy, very much involved in the Interfaith Council, very much involved in a whole series of social service activities with his primary focus being the Northern Westchester Women's Shelter and the Children's Village in Dobbs Ferry. So an absolutely remarkable guy with a list of volunteer accomplishments that makes you wonder how he has time for his day job. And it was a well-deserved award and one of those moments that not only causes us to have pride in Pleasantville, but pride in the service that so many Westchester County residents have been honored for. So it was an extremely nice event and a nice way to create a positive moment in an otherwise sad event. The other thing I wanted to mention was that last Saturday night, the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department had their inspection, which is an event where they pull out all their trucks and all of their members appear in their dress blues and are inspected by various people invited, as well as other chiefs from other communities, and then they follow with a reception thereafter. And Patty Dwyer and I attended on behalf of the village, and it was an impressive event for a whole series of reasons, not the least of which is although we are generally aware of what these people do, when you actually spend some time looking at the complexity of the equipment they operate, talking to them about the kind of training they go through, and talking to them about the call schedules they are willing to accept, you realize what an extraordinary service to the community it is, that we have so many friends and neighbors who are not only willing to train diligently in order to become firefighters, but are willing to get up at a moment's notice in the dark of night and come and help us. So as was pointed out by a number of fellow chiefs from neighboring areas, the Pleasantville Fire Department has had more than a share of calls last year, and there was some joking that the new chief, George Dolce, has had the bad luck of having a string of action that the previous chief, John Cullen, did not have to suffer through. But we've had a number of circumstances where really tragic circumstances have been averted and damage to property has been minimized wherever it could be. So what we need to realize on a daily basis is that our friends and neighbors who are members of the Volunteer Fire Department are not only providing an extraordinary service, not only putting their time and, in some cases, their safety at risk in order to protect all of us, but they do this entirely as volunteers and are themselves responsible for an extraordinary saving on the part of the government. So it was a great night for the Volunteer Fire Department. The Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps was there as well. All of the foregoing applies to them as well. So if you know somebody who's on the ambulance corps or the fire department, next time you see them, let them know that you've been thinking about the kind of service they provide. It's an extraordinary, extraordinary group of people. So a couple of points of interest. Some of you may have heard me comment a couple of weeks ago that I went to Quincy, Massachusetts to talk to the Stop &amp; Shop Corporation, they being the current owners of the MLA property on Marble Avenue, and Patty, Dwyer, and I met them last Thursday here in Pleasantville as well at the MLA site. And Stop &amp; Shop has affirmed to us that they are going to be marketing the property. It'll be put on the market through First Service Williams Real Estate, and we are anxiously awaiting word that it is actively on the market. And anyone who has any interest whatsoever in the MLA property, or knows somebody who might be, is encouraged to get into trust with, in touch with the First Service Williams office in Stamford, which is the listing agency. If you want an easy way to do that, you can also contact the village office and they can direct you to the right place. So hopefully this presages positive development at the MLA site, and a site that's been dormant for now pushing nine years might again become a linchpin piece of the Pleasantville economy. So stay tuned. Hopefully something good will happen there. The last thing I wanted to mention is, as we have been talking about for some meetings in a row, we are awaiting confirmation from the State Controller's Office about the impact of the recent financial trouble on our contributions to the state pension plan. Both our police officers as well as our non-police employees are members of pension plans that are administered by New York State out of Albany, and on an annual basis, towns and villages across the state are required to contribute a percentage of our total payroll towards the pension plan. The current contributions are about 7.5% of payroll for non-police employees and about 15% of payroll for police employees. The investments of the fund have declined in value, and as a result, the controller expects to increase the contributions to something like 11.5% for non-police employees and 18.5% for police employees. So the New York Conference of Mayors gave us a memo last week indicating that those are the numbers they're expecting to be finalized, 11.5% and 18.5% of payroll. We're expecting that the impact to us for the fiscal year 2011, which is the year that is affected here, would be somewhere between $300,000 and $350,000. So that is a very significant hit to our budget and one that is a cause for concern and perhaps an even greater cause of concern for the future, because if the pension investments don't rebound over the next several years, the State Controller has indicated that the percent of payroll might be raised further. So we have our eye on that. Again, it's a matter that affects our 2011 fiscal year, not our 2010 fiscal year, but it's a source of significant concern, and we are watching it. So anybody else have any announcements to make?
I just, I had to give a shout out to my seniors, who I had the honor of attending their kickoff luncheon this week, and very well attended, and they sign up for all their programs. Hopefully they're signing up for those programs that keep them more involved and healthy and vital members of our community. But it was a great, a great day, and we had a lot of fun, too.
All right. We have a public hearing scheduled that I think we'll put off a little bit further in our agenda. One of the things that we've been trying to do at board meetings is have community groups come and present to the public some information about what they do and what their mission is and all of the above. We're also going to put together a schedule that we'll publish that will allow you to look ahead and see who may be coming when and when, which, when department heads will be coming to make presentations, as well as meetings with boards and commissions. But tonight, we have the Jacob Burns Film Center. Steve Apcon, the executive director, and Dominic Baletta are here tonight. Welcome.
Thanks for inviting us, and I want to introduce to those on the board that don't know our managing director, Dominic Baletta. Dominic is my partner in the Film Center and is doing a wonderful job and a great addition to our staff and the organization. I appreciate you giving us the time to come and to give you an update on what's been going on. It's actually been eight years this past June since we opened our doors, and from the beginning, when we began this process more than 10 years ago, it began as a real partnership with the village of Pleasantville. And some board members still here, new board members along the way, but everybody's had a real part in what's gone on at the Film Center for the last eight years, and we really appreciate that ongoing partnership from you guys, from the administration, and from the community. The, I guess the most exciting thing over the past couple of years for us was the opening last June, uh, last January, excuse me, of the Media Arts Lab, which is a project that was going on for quite a bit of time. We spent more countless hours than I want to imagine in front of the Planning Commission, headed by Dan Sweeney and Russ Klein, the ZBA, and working very closely with Patty, Judy, with Steve Johnson, and especially with Mike Testa. And I think that the result of what we have in the Media Arts Lab was so positively impacted by the involvement of each of these people and these commissions, committees, that we're so appreciative of. And I think that this is, what it represents really is the collective effort, not only of our organization, but of the village as well, and so we thank you guys for all of that. I tried to, in putting together a few thoughts for tonight to share with you, I thought that what might most, what might be most relevant would be to talk about the specific ways over the past year or so in which we've engaged with the Pleasantville community. And I thought I could talk about a few of those things, and happy to answer any questions that you might have. These are in no particular order. We have worked very closely with the Pleasantville SEPTA, the Special Ed PTA, on a variety of initiatives. A screening of Autism Every Day, which we programmed with a panel of guest speakers. On October 14 of this month, we'll be screening, in connection with the Pleasantville SEPTA, a film called Rachel Is, which is about a developmentally disabled young woman. The filmmaker is actually a past member of our education faculty, attended SUNY Purchase, and she'll be in attendance on the 14th, and she'll be talking with the audience after the screening, both about the filmmaking as well as about the subject of the film, which is very close to her. It's actually about her sister. And she's going to engage the audience in a broader discussion about developmentally disabled adults. And the first event and this event as well, Rachel Is, are both free to the public, and we invite anybody to come. We have worked with the Pleasantville schools very closely with Dr. Antonekia, who's been a wonderful supporter, and with each of the principals of the schools. Students at Pleasantville Schools have the benefit, and I have a fifth grader, so I know, have the benefit of being able to walk to the Film Center to participate in our education programs and don't have the burden of the busing costs like other communities. And when our Media Arts Lab doors opened, we welcomed many, many Pleasantville students. I will tell you, of the 180 students this year that participated in the Media Arts Lab, which included many Pleasantville students, 25% of that population were scholarship students. So our education programs at the Film Center, in which there have been about 100,000 students participating over the last eight years, 55% of those students participate free of charge. So nobody's turned away, and we're trying to do the same thing with the Media Arts Lab, even in this economic environment. Going back to Pleasantville SEPTA, actually, we're working on another initiative with Pleasantville SEPTA, as well as with the high school. We worked with them to do outreach to parents of special needs children, to encourage them to enroll their child in after-school programs at the lab, and identified a few courses that would, that would be particularly of interest. And with the high school and with ECHO, the community service organization, which is a great organization, we will be working to provide one-on-one support for those children that need it in those classes. So it's really a wonderful collaboration between our organization, our faculty, Pleasantville SEPTA, and ECHO. And we already know of three Pleasantville high school students and three special needs students that will be involved in this collaboration, and if anybody is interested in learning more about that, please contact us. Our doors are certainly open to that. We also had students from Pleasantville High School participating in our internship program, fulfilling part of their requirements by being TAs. They'll be TAs in this fall for a homeschooling class that we'll be bringing in during the days into the Media Arts Lab, as well as for this class, for, as well as another class for, actually for adults and for children with developmental delays, and that's through a partnership with Westchester Arc. We have received the distinction over the past couple of years from the Westchester Arts Council, now Arts Westchester, that we're very pleased at being considered an official cultural destination in Westchester. And there's a lot that goes on as a result of that with the, with Arts Westchester in terms of thinking about marketing in a broader way, which we hope will have residual benefit on the businesses that we, that we have in Pleasantville. In response to a request from many Pleasantville mothers to show some of our programming during the day and trying to balance that with parking concerns, this past winter, we piloted an eight-week short series of Monday films at noon, and we worked with Virginia Pancotti to make sure that seniors were informed and able to attend those screenings as well, and we hope to be able to do that again as we move forward. We work with a variety of other organizations in Pleasantville, and one of the, one of the programs that I think is very exciting that we started over the past year is Friday Night Movies for Teens. And one of the challenges that we had in our historical eight years with the Film Center was that Friday and Saturdays are the days where most of the audience wants to come to see a film. And we've always wanted to do films for teenagers and to create a safe space for them that is not sanctioned by the village, or by the rec. department, or by the schools, or by their parents, but a place for them to find each other. And the challenge that we had was, because we had such demand on Fridays and Saturdays for our regular programming, we couldn't take a theater offline to do that. With the opening of the Media Arts Lab, we have been able to do that, and we have a Friday Night Film Series that is programmed by teenagers here in Pleasantville and in surrounding communities, and it has become really a terrific event. It ran through the summer and will continue into the fall. They have seen films that they otherwise would have no exposure to. They've actually met filmmakers that have come as guests, and through that experience and the Facebook community that's been created around it, they've also found the Film Center. So it's really broadened the experience of Pleasantville teenagers in terms of their exposure to this culture, and is very much their own. We have many Pleasantville teens working over at the theater. We love seeing their first job, coming in and learning how to work with the public. There's a host of them that started today. I just met a couple from the high school, a junior and a senior, and they're among our new crew. We also have had the good fortune of working with a number of Pleasantville high school students as interns and as TAs in our classes and in our summer programs. We ran our first full session of classes last spring, both children classes, classes for children and for adults. And adults created some really wonderful documentaries, and we will be running adult classes again this fall. So we're looking forward to seeing what comes out of that. You may know about the documentary filmmaking program that we've had ongoing for the last five or six years with high school students called Unscripted, and it's an intergenerational program in which high school students learn to tell, learn filmmaking, to tell the stories of seniors in the community. And it's really been a wonderful experience for both communities, I think, for seniors who, who many of us don't have a connection with, and they don't have a reason to have a connection with us, but we've gotten to know them through this program and really some wonderful people. And for the high school students who don't have an opportunity to sit with somebody in their 90s and talk about life and talk about history. Oftentimes today, grandparents are spread out, and we don't have that kind of experience. So it's really enriched both of their lives, I believe. This summer, we had a number of films made, Pleasantville students participating, and on September 23 at 7:00 p.m., we will be screening, and I have invitations here for each of you, and the public is invited as well. You can find out more about it on our website, but September 23 at 7:00 p.m., we will be hosting the premiere of this summer's Unscripted films, of which one is about Dorothy Guzman, who is a resident here in Pleasantville, a wonderful lady and a dancer, and really jumps off the screen, so you couldn't ask for a better subject. Another one is a, is a woman who's a nationally ranked senior tennis player, playing here at the Pleasantville Tennis Club. So, and the students have also had an opportunity to look beyond the Pleasantville borders. One of the other subjects of Unscripted this summer is probably the greatest living jazz guitarist, Bucky Pizzarelli, who has played with everybody, Glenn Miller, it's an extraordinary list, and he is, we had students who actually shot the last, the last night of the Les Paul Trio, the night before Les passed away. He was in the hospital, and Bucky sat in, and Les had asked him to sit in to play for him at Iridium, a jazz club in the city, and we took a bunch of students down to shoot that, and that's been incorporated into this film about Bucky Pizzarelli. So that's also on the 23rd. I think the other thing that's very exciting and very current is that we established an international film fellows program this spring, and we renovated the residence at Five Grant Street, and the idea is, over time, to have filmmakers from around the world living here in Pleasantville, screening their films, teaching our students, both children and adults, and being a connection with the community. And we, as of an hour ago, we just welcomed our third filmmaker fellow. His name is Idohar. He is an absolutely incredible filmmaker. There are two films of his that we've played that I highly recommend, Melting Siberia and Nine Star Hotel. He just got off the plane from Tel Aviv, and he'll be here, living in Pleasantville for three months, and is ecstatic to be here, and is a really wonderful guy, so I hope you'll come and get to know him. The first filmmaker, who I know many of you met, and Peter you so graciously greeted the first night that she screened one of her films at the Film Center, was from Burkina Faso, Fonta Regina Necro, and was a wonderful first filmmaker to have here. And then we were joined this summer by a filmmaker from Sarajevo, Nami Kabiel, who co-taught a series, an education program called World Crew, which is our first college program, and he co-taught that with one of our faculty members, Academy Award nominated filmmaker, in her own right, Susan Todd. So those are some of the things that are going on at the Media Arts Lab and at the Filmmakers Lab, Filmmaker Film Center. And this Thursday, October 17, we will be having another open house.
September.
September.
Right.
September 17. We are in September. It just was Labor Day. September 17 at 5:30 and again at 6 o'clock, we'll have an open house and a tour of the Media Arts Lab, and we welcome anybody from the public to come join us, and certainly you guys as well. Just a little bit of what's going on. There's lots more I could share, but I know that you have a busy agenda, and I just wanted to give you a flavor for the things that we're involved in, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sounds great. Are you thinking that the Friday Night Teenager Film Thing would become a year-round thing, or?
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, again, the idea is to have this safe space where they've programmed it, and it's worked quite well, and they've created a Facebook community, and it's very interesting because one of the filmmakers that came here, a guy named Jonathan Coet, who is actually quite an interesting filmmaker, he, he made a film called Tarnation, which sort of took the world by surprise about six, seven years ago at Sundance. It was a film that was made for about $300, and was extraordinary. So we screened that for these kids, and Jonathan was there to talk afterward. He was so inspired by what's going on that he has, is coming back on his next documentary, and he'll be here later this month, working with the students to shoot in our soundstage in Green Screen, a piece of his documentary with those, with our students from our programs, being able to, to help and be involved and observe the process.
Are there movies on your website for the teen night, or where do I send my teens to figure out what's going on?
Facebook. Facebook. Friday Night Films at the Lab, and there's a Facebook group, and if they join that, you won't hear about it, but they will.
And how many kids show up?
We routinely have 60 kids there, which is, which is what we'd like.
It's a fantastic thing.
It's been great.
Yeah. It's great.
You know, one of the things I am struck by, and I think it'd be interesting for people to realize, I find my way down at lunchtime to the deli or whatever, and there's a line of people, and I start counting how many of them are employees at the Burns', and I mean, it goes not only to the question of the community you've created, but also the economic impact of having you all here. Maybe you could share with us sort of the scale of the operation, the number of people you have and all of that. I think people don't quite realize what all is going on over there.
Be happy to. We have right now 35 full-time staff members, not including adjunct faculty or kids or part-timers working over at the theater or in the Media Arts Lab. So 35 people who are making their living here in Pleasantville and spending dollars. There was a study that was done recently by Arts Westchester that looked just at audience spending in communities, and what it came out was that $1.7 or $1.70 per dollar spent at the box office is spent in the community, which translates to, translates to over $2 million of spending from people in restaurants and other businesses. So the arts can have quite a positive impact on the economy, and that's not Pleasantville specific, that's true of the arts in general. We, we work very closely with so many nonprofit organizations, with the schools, and really embrace those kinds of collaborations, and that's been very positive here as well.
And roughly how many people are making their way through the theater on a weekly basis?
On a weekly basis.
Or a weekend or whatever.
About 200,000 people a year.
Wow. But if you're walking outside, as some of us do, at about 6 o'clock at night or 6:30, I mean, the number of people who are walking around, looking for a place to eat, asking the directions for restaurants, it's virtually every night that I leave my building and walk down the street. There are people who are asking about parking, and do they have to feed the meter at that at 6:15? So it's, it is a huge impact on the building.
And I also can't say enough for the Pleasantville businesses, for the restaurants, for Phil McGrath, for Bollywood, for Sundance, for Doug Crossit and McArthur's, for everybody here, they've been really wonderful partners. We had a terrific dinner before a screening of Julie and Julia, where Phil cooked a Julia Child-inspired dinner that was just great, and it's really nice.
Can Phil do a Julia Child imitation?
I haven't, I didn't hear the imitation, but, but the food certainly worked. I didn't have the beef bougignon, but other than that.
Depends on your wine selection as to how good his imitation is.
And we've had wonderful filmmakers here over the last year. I think the other thing that's important, now being eight years into this, is that our hope is that there really is something for everybody, and, you know, for some people who see that the more current films that we may play have more of an arthouse sort of feel to them, there's such a wide variety of films that we play. We did an amazing baseball series, having great guests here. Brian Cashman was here recently and was a wonderful guest, Bird Sugar, programmed a boxing series. There's so many varied things that we encourage everybody in Pleasantville to come and to be a part of it and to check out what's going on, and certainly to come see what's going on at the Media Arts Lab.
Sounds great.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, we appreciate that and invite you back anytime you have something new to tell us. I think it's helpful not only for the board to hear it, but also for the community to hear it. Although you're speaking to a relatively quiet room, that's because there are so many ways to see us, as you probably know better than we do. So it's an opportunity, I think, to make sure that everybody knows what's going on and has, maximizes the opportunity to take advantage of what's going on, and also to address any issues that we all see on either side of the table. So we stand ready to do that, and I know you do too, and I so much appreciate your willingness to come.
Yeah, I think this is great. I mean, I think the more you can do to communicate, I don't know how you do it, because communication is your guys' specialty, to the village as to what's going on, because it's, there's still a subset of the community that hasn't fully embraced what the Jacob Burns Center and media do and all they contribute, and... what Jacob Burns Center and Media do and all they contribute. And we have the board here about, you know, the nonprofit issues and that kind of stuff. And we fight that every, we combat that as much as we can, but nobody does it better than you do. And you know, even little things like, you know, if you can think of ways to better educate the audience in terms of where they could park, so they're not asking Skarstad if he's not happy to be on the street. But I think that it's a great, what you've done is terrific. And the more we can champion the success internally in the community and get kids involved on the teen level and get their parents to eventually adopt where there's not been the adoption yet.
I appreciate that, absolutely. And our doors are open and you know, it's not that there aren't bumps along the road in eight years of running a very public institution in the middle of a village. And we have tried to be as responsive as we can and to learn from those things and to engage in that kind of communication. And we have very open lines of communication with Patty, who's been very supportive. And it'll be a continuing dialogue. And as we grow and as the Media Arts Lab emerges as its own sort of center of activity, we're going to learn more along the way. And we hope to have that open dialogue with you guys and with the public. And we appreciate everything that you've done for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
September 23rd.
That's a great series, actually. An unscripted series is unbelievable.
Dorothy, I gotta see this. It's gonna be great.
Good. The invitations for you guys.
Okay, thank you. We'll just pass them down, you could just leave them there.
Such a nice archive, the unscripted movies, you know, 15, 20, 30. I mean, did you tell me that one of the unscripted movies was actually played at a memorial service?
And over time, you know, it's created really this tapestry and this real, an oral history of Pleasantville and our residents and is a really rich experience. One of the programs we're running at Westchester Community College is working with the Gateway Center and the English Learning Institute. And we've worked with immigrants from all over the world, teaching them basic literacy through filmmaking, this program that we've developed with them. And the idea is to create these digital stories and for them to learn to listen and speak and read and write traditional literacies through this 21st century literacy process. And to build a kiosk where there's a map of the world and anywhere you press, a story will come up of a Westchester resident and what their background is and their personal story. So to have that in Pleasantville with our seniors is really wonderful as well.
Here's a thought to throw out, and I don't know what the logistics would be, but PCTV now has this on-demand video archive. It'd be interesting to know if it would be possible to get the unscripted movies that have been done by Pleasantville kids or about Pleasantville subjects posted there and available on-demand through that website.
Absolutely. We also have over 400 animated films that have been created by nine and 10-year-olds that have played in film festivals all over the world.
And Steve, I know that there was some thought to creating a shelf at the library of Jacob Burns Film Center recommends.
There is, that is happening with Westchester Library System and actually it'll be here in Pleasantville. And it will be a tremendous resource for the community of films that we're helping to program with them.
That's great because a lot of those films are hard to find, too. Netflix doesn't have all of them.
That's true. Even Netflix. But we encourage you to go to the website. That's probably the best place to get any information. There's a screening room on the website, so you can see some of the work that's been created by our students, both adults and children, and learn about the various programs that are going on.
Thank you. Welcome down.
burnsfilmcenter.org.
That is www.burnsfilmcenter.org. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks very much, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Congratulations. Did you do this?
Appreciate it.
Did you do this? Four W's. WW giving away.
All right. As mentioned, the Burns is just one of the many organizations in Pleasantville that are doing interesting things. And we're going to be inviting other groups to come in and talk to the community on an annual basis so that we can all be better aware of what's going on in various places and have an opportunity to deal proactively with whatever issues may arise and also have a better opportunity for people to take advantage of what goes on. We have a public hearing tonight, which is a continuation of a local law amending Chapter 185 zoning, Section 185-3, which is definitions and word use, Section 185-19 about the Central Business A1 District. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
This is something of a procedural step and it's worth, I think, at this point, discussing a little further. We posted some, quite a few months ago, draft language that would address a series of concerns that have been had about the downtown zoning, the use and control of properties on corners, whether they ought to be restricted in various ways, the use of first-floor spaces in the downtown district for other-than-retail activities, addressing the question of whether we should permit offices in first-floor uses. And we have also talked at some length about businesses that might produce drive-throughs, about the proliferation of banks and about definitions of food uses and whether the definitions we have in our existing zoning code are appropriate to the range of food uses that now exist today. And all of that led to a review and assembly of a committee to look at the downtown business district zoning. And that process has gone well along. And perhaps, Steve, are you in a position to comment on where that stands right now? Steve was one of the co-chairs of that venture prior to his ascension to the board.
Ascension?
Ascension, that's right.
Well, that's a logic.
Probably more of a lateral move, I think.
Dante's ascension. Yeah, which level was that?
The Central Business District Committee, which Peter was referring to, I presume, had looked at a number of Central Business District-related issues. And amongst those were zoning recommendations for curing or fixing some of the past known issues with zoning in the Village of Pleasantville. They were more backward-looking than they were forward-looking in large measure, with the idea that as the Central Business District recommendations moved along and became firmer and there may or may not be needs related to those for zoning changes, that those would follow the fixing of existing zoning issues as we know them within the village. So we've had input from the Building Inspector, who has prepared, had prepared for us a list of issues that he had seen from his perspective. And some of those were commercial, some of them were residentially oriented changes. We also had looked at recommendations from the Planning Board over the past, I guess it's over the past five or six years, and summarized what those recommendations were by going through the minutes of the past Planning Board recommendations to the Village Board of Trustees. And then finally, we had looked at zoning board variances and what those variances had had to do with and how many of them dealt with areas of zoning that might be fixed by going in and tweaking the zoning ordinance. So combining all those three together, we had prepared an outline, which had been forwarded to you all, Patty. But that outline went to the board members, yeah. So that is something that's been out there. We kind of have, as I understand it, three things that we've been seeing on and off. One is that larger package of recommendations, the Building Inspector's rather lengthy memo, and then some actual code language. How we integrate those three, I think, is kind of a challenge. I think there's probably some discussion that needs to happen about the specific code recommendations. And I think that there's probably some massaging of those that would be necessary once we complete that view or that discussion by our village attorney to make sure that we're not inadvertently creating some additional concerns with zoning that we were intending to fix. So that is kind of, from my perspective, where we are at.
Well, here's my thought and chime in, anyone else. What we have before us and what we've continued to adjourn and then continue this public hearing about is a little bit of a catch-all document. I don't think it's a document that any of us believe was itself likely to become the final zoning text. And we kept it open, awaiting some clear direction out of the Central Business District Planning Committee. And I think we're probably at the point where we could have that group back in and sort of take their handoff. There are a couple of pieces of that that are still ongoing, but I think, my sense of it is that the core of their range of recommendations is out there. Recognizing that this document, I think, is not one that's likely to end up being incorporated into zoning and, to my knowledge, has actually not been needed in order to forestall any negative developments, I'm somewhat inclined to close this public hearing and to end our discussion of this.
Thank God.
And then to repost a new document when we're ready to do it that would reflect a sense of the board about what we really are inclined to do.
I think it makes a lot of sense because there are just too many loose ends about what's currently on the table in terms of language and what it is that folks at the CBD level and here at this board and other boards think to try to move ahead to a conclusive statement, other than let's back off for a bit and get our act together a little bit better before we.
I have no issue with that, except that I just, I'm so lost in the trees on this whole situation. The only thing that sort of, I mean, I was gonna say that I'd like to know where we stood with the other thing because we keep opening and closing on this document that seemingly loses relevance every time we do, more relevance. What are the steps going forward? I mean, we've got all these committees that did all this hard work. We've got this, to my best of my knowledge, Steve, are they meeting anymore? Are you guys, are they doing anything at this point? Who's waiting for what? I mean, and where is the organization of this coming from to push this thing forward? Because the only thing that this document has served for me was just a reminder that, you know, we're doing stuff. And now I'm wondering, are we still even doing stuff?
I think that's a good question. The last time that the, the last push with the Central Business District was to engage a design firm to look at, or to look at with them, design alternatives for looking forward with the downtown. And I think that was largely viewed as being the last significant component of what they needed to wrap up their work. And I'm not sure where that's.
Well, Patty, I had an exchange today. That was John Ebiano of IQ Landscape Architects.
I'm hoping to hear from him now that, you know, the summer's passed.
He replied, I saw that, it may have been after, late in the day, and basically said that he's ready to get going, but hasn't gotten going yet. So again, disagree with me if you see it differently. I don't think that piece of it, which is really a sort of next-level design piece for thinking about Memorial Plaza, necessarily has much to do with what we might do as far as amending the zoning code. So my sense of it is, we ought to invite the chairs and whoever else may wish to participate from the CBD Planning Committee to come in at a work session as soon as we can reasonably do it and as convenient for them, to take their draft work product, which I think has been massaged a bit since we last saw it. And then all of us digest it and see what can come out of it that would be a new document. I mean, I think it's quite clear through this process that there are some aspects of our zoning code that do need changing. My opinion, for example, is that our definitions of food uses are clearly not up to the job. They reflect the world as it was 20 years ago. And things like a Starbucks, for example, just don't fit anymore and we need to revisit that. And certainly the other questions that were under discussion, formula businesses, corners, et cetera, have been subject that I think the CBD Committee has come up with recommendations on, albeit in a few cases, groups within the committee having disagreements.
Well, who was it that came up with this document? This predated my coming back to the board.
This was a bit of a grab bag and I think I had contributed some of it. Bernie had contributed some of it.
So this did not come from the committee?
No, it did not, no.
No, the Planning Commission reviewed it, though.
It did. And they had almost, they had a very long, as I recall.
Longer than that, I recall.
Longer than this. Now, by reviewed, you mean they made changes?
Well, they commented on it. And that's all part of the record and the CBD Committee has that as well. But I really do think that it's clear enough that a.
So those changes that they recommended are not reflected?
Are not reflected here. They're part of the record that we have.
So that something that they might generate would incorporate presumably some of those suggestions that.
Well, you know, I think, my sense of it is, the point we're at is to take back the work product of the CBD Committee, not thinking about zoning text, how to implement it, but thinking about the philosophical issues. What do we think about corner properties? What do we think about first-floor properties, et cetera?
This has been on the table for quite some time.
About a year, yeah.
And so presumably, everybody sort of, you know, has been out there and discussed and people have, I'm not you necessarily, not people on this board, but people in the village.
I don't think anybody has.
You know, there was a pretty large committee involved, 60 or so people.
Those people do, I'm sure, but I don't think a lot of.
I don't know that we've had what I would call a true public hearing where we have told the public this is what we're gonna do and then had them react. We've always told them, yeah, this is out there, but it's not, it's really more of an outline. And it's not really a public hearing, much open and closed. So what this has facilitated, as far as I can see, is the discussion. And that's a good thing. Sort of a community-wide, maybe a low-level discussion. But it seems that what we need then is something that incorporates all of the thinking of the various boards and people and so on. And then make it mean something. You know, here's a document that we're driving to and let's drive there. Let's go there.
I agree. And this predates the committee and so I think we take back.
No, I'm not criticizing it, I'm just saying, I agree with you.
So let's close this, let's mercifully put it to bed. It's served a purpose.
I've always loved this, "drive-through features, any retail establishment that serves customers by means of widows," or "open-air features." I just love that word, widows.
That's a special limit to who you're allowed to hire.
Ben has a comment.
Ben, did you have something you want to say?
Here's a quick question.
Okay, here, come to.
Mine says.
Ben Cerbin, 159 Sarals Lane. I just have a technical question just regarding, if you're closing the public hearing, technically is the moratorium ending?
Well, there was no moratorium. When you post a proposed zoning revision for public hearing, it has a protective aspect to it because someone is not allowed to propose something that would violate that which has been proposed. They could then come to the Village Board. To my knowledge, in the year or so that this has been out, none of those circumstances has arisen. And I'm not of the opinion that what we have here is all that protective anyway. So I mean, my sense of it is, we should move on and we should be diligent about taking back from the committee their recommendations, sifting through it and reflecting back to the committee and the community our sense of what we might propose. Are you concerned about that?
No, I mean, in theory, I think, and this is just a belief, that in essence, because of this, you know, proposed language was out there, that might have inhibited some businesses from opening up. So that's why I was just curious if there's going to be some timeframe where you're going to try to implement or stick to a schedule, just so it doesn't drag on.
I agree with you and I think that's sort of what my thinking is about, putting this one to bed and moving on to the next step. My sense is that we could certainly get together with the CBD Committee in the next couple of weeks, assuming they're available to do it. And then hopefully, over the next some weeks thereafter, have a number of work sessions at which we discuss it and invite comment from the public in that discussion. And then come forward with a new document that really reflects a sense of the board about where we'd like to go with it.
That does bring up a good point, because I did forget the sort of somewhat protective nature of this public hearing. And that is, in the course of public hearing, if people are thinking about opening a business and don't like the direction that we're going, without this in place, would that enable them to go and front-run wherever a direction looks like that we're going?
It would.
Without us having, at least having the ability to put some mild brakes on it.
It would, although I guess I'm not, first off, of the view that the existing zoning is so tragically broken that it presents enormous risk. And certainly there's some risk. I mean, it's interesting to note, and one of the things we should talk about over the next few weeks, is one of the aspects of this was the discussion about limiting the use of first-floor spaces to retail functions as opposed to offices. And you know, a couple of people, including at least one landlord, said to me, you know. And, you know, a couple of people, including at least one landlord, said to me, you know, I wish I could rent this to anybody, you know, retail office, you know, if somebody wants to stack boxes in it, if they'll pay me for it, I'd be happy to get it. And obviously it's our job to be thinking in a forward-looking way about what can benefit the overall Central Business District. But certainly, you know, that little bit of anecdotal feedback may put a little bit of a different slant on how many controls we think it's reasonable to install right now. I mean, I know, for example, Chappaqua at the moment has been going through an extended discussion. They had established some limits on banks and had a bank that actually rented a space and has been paying for it for quite a long time while they tried to get past that. Although I do I do understand that this was in some sense protective and that's partly why we did it, I'm not of the view that we present all that much risk, especially since it's quite clear that, you know, we need to get to some.
But I guess the only thing, the only comment I would make there, Peter, is that if, I mean, I'm not convinced that it gives you much protection anyway, but to the extent that it does, if we you could make the argument that we keep it open, that we then, you know, preserve whatever protection it does give us and whatever control we do have. If it's neither here nor there, then let's leave it up and move ahead with refining what these are. We could close it tonight, it would make us feel better, we finished something, but then I think to some extent we might have lost something in that process, as satisfying as that might be.
Anybody else have a thought on it?
I don't really think it offers us that much more protection. As far as a moratorium, our moratorium is over.
I mean, it is not a moratorium. There's no moratorium.
The moratorium that we had was a six-month, right?
Right.
Am I right? A six-month thing and it's over. But I don't really feel as if our current zoning is going to, you know, make us more vulnerable than this document here, you know, if we table it and maybe it will cause us to act a little quicker to get something better done.
I mean, this is a legal question. This is something for us to pontificate behind this table without a legal background. The way it was described before is it actually did afford us quite a bit of legal.
Who described?
Protection.
Who described?
It was when Bernie was on and, I mean, there was.
Did counsel or was that?
I thought that they did.
Well, our code says anytime you introduce legislation, it does in effect create some sort of moratorium and you cannot take an action that would be contrary to the legislation you're proposing.
Our local code says that?
Yeah.
The code of the village says that?
Right.
Has that ever been challenged?
Uh, no.
The reason I'm asking, I've never heard of that anywhere else.
But there's a reasonableness standard too and you can't leave these things on the table for two years.
Right.
This has been out for two years?
No.
A year and a half.
A year.
Well, certainly the world certainly the world has changed rather dramatically in the amount of time that this has been on ongoing consideration by this board and there's a whole other set of operating parameters out there right now for a lot of people, which is surviving and not going bankrupt.
And I wouldn't suggest that we weren't hiding behind this legislation to prevent something. We have no activity whatsoever.
That was the whole issue starting though. I mean, and the pretense that, you know, I had issues with from the very beginning with this whole thing is that, you know, you can't zoning should be a sort of be able to survive all sorts of economic ups and downs. And so the fact that we are in this economic upside-downness, when we started, we weren't, you know, I'm perfectly fine to throw all this out because a lot of it I don't necessarily never have agreed with. But at the same time, to the degree that there are some good stuff in it and stuff that we need to really consider, I mean, you know, this sort of the fire was lit here based on Dunkin' Donuts. You know, I'm wondering how many in Pleasantville now think Dunkin' Donuts was such a horrendous idea now that they've been there for a year. I mean, I don't know. A lot of people I talked to, it doesn't seem to be the same sort of magnitude of issue as when they the thought of them going in there was out there. So again, I don't care whether I guess I don't care whether they close this or not because I wasn't really afraid of our zoning the way it was to begin with, but to the degree that there was a desire to change it and protect it and to do some of the changes that we thought we would, then to close it now versus not, I mean, again, the consensus of the board, they want to do it, fine. I think losing that protection is a little bit contrary to the rationale for having it in the first place. But like you said, if it's two years of ridiculous or a year and a half and it doesn't really afford us the protection we thought it did, then what's the point? I agree with Peter that it's just.
And really, it's not that I'm not mindful of that concern, but I mean, the one thing everybody has to realize and certainly the community has to realize is that we absolutely need businesses in this community and the only way that we will ever get to the core of the problem of high and escalating taxes is to have more business activity. So when you have something like this out here for as long as we've had it, I don't wish to send a contrary message to the business community at all that, you know, we're going to string people around through all kinds of hoops because that's not what we're trying to do.
Nor have we done it during the moratorium.
I agree. I agree. So my sense of it is, yes, you could make the argument that considering to keep it open is at least modestly protective. I say modestly because there are some aspects of this that I think haven't been ratified by the board in terms of consensus and that are internally inconsistent. And I think it's time to set this aside and say it served its purpose. It's time to give it a peaceful death and then take active responsibility for getting back with the CBD committee and coming to a serious consensus about what and how much of their recommendations we're ready to propose for new zoning text.
Yeah, but that's fine. I was just going to say though, as far as timing goes, Marble Avenue is any indication? You know, I think it's like a week is like dog years. I mean, you multiply it by 10, you know, and that gives you a sense of timing. I mean, it just seems to be the way that things go.
There's no doubt that it's a difficult and sort of a painstaking process, but my sense of it is I'm inclined to close this and move on.
I agree.
I mean, you know, just I was not here for the formula food discussion. I'm just a little concerned that maybe when the economy is upside down like it is now, that however you feel about formula versus non-formula food establishments, that maybe an economy like this might make it more likely for a formula food establishment to enter a business neighborhood and be more successful than a small model operation. It's it might open us to sort of more to more develop in that area. I'm not judging whether that's good or bad. I'm just saying that by removing this makes us maybe slightly more vulnerable to that, if vulnerable is the word.
I mean, there are all kinds of things that could happen that we'd rather not happen and all kinds of things that could happen that we'd love to see happen. In the end, zoning is a blunt instrument. As I say, I'm not of the view that our base zoning, our existing zoning is tragically broken. I think it needs some upgrades. And recognize, you know, that there are all kinds of, to my knowledge, that you'd have to be doing some digging to even know this document exists. It would be Mike Testa, it would bring it to your attention. So, you know, if somebody was interested in a fast food activity, they'd have come to Mike and said, hey, I'm interested in that and he would have had to bring this up and I'm pretty confident based on a conversation I had with him, not with the last month, but the month before, that that hasn't happened. So, I mean.
But he would have known about the document.
Right, right.
But keep in mind, I mean, in essence, Dunkin' Donuts, when they did apply, they did read the zoning and they knew how to apply. I mean, in essence, they knew what the hurdles were and they geared their application around that.
Well, it was illegal use.
Yeah, no, it was. I'm just saying, so I think that, you know, businesses are more aware of.
No, I mean, businesses are aware, businesses are aware, I think, of the zoning code that is on the web. I'm not sure they're aware of this. That is to say, the reason I brought that up is I think certainly Mike's office would have had a sense of it if there was activity that was proposed that would be contrary to the to these things. I mean, one of the unfortunate aspects of the recession has been there's not been a lot of activity proposed. So I really, you know, there's risk in everything, but I think the time has come to sort of wipe this slate clean and take responsibility for going ahead.
Not to suggest that we have to take responsibility.
No, I just think we're at the point we're at the point at which we should fish or cut bait.
Agreed.
All right. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. So as mentioned, we'll get together, Patty, if we could get together with the CBD committee as soon as is realistically possible for them. And in whatever group they think would be the most useful work group, let's.
Peter, I would just suggest that since a number of the initiatives originally came from the planning board's recommendations to the Village Board, specifically from the planning board as a proactive group making recommendations to the Village Board for zoning code changes, I would extend the invitation to them and I suppose as well to the ZBA and the ARB and also to Mike. I don't know how many members of each board would attend, but.
Well, let me throw this out as a possibility. Perhaps we should get together with the CBD committee first and we've been talking about a schedule of meetings with each of the various boards and commissions, having an evening when planning comes in once a year, zoning comes in once a year, et cetera. And perhaps this would be the sort of focus of getting those three zoning, planning and ARB all in a row on this subject. Does that make sense?
That could work.
Certainly anybody's welcome at any meeting.
Are you guys assuming that the comments that they already made a year ago, I guess it was a year ago, are no longer enforced, that they might want to revise their comments?
Well, no, I think that we've got several different documents now that we're looking at. We have the legislation, which we just moved to close the hearing on and put on a side, if you will, not taking it off the table entirely, we're just putting it on side for further discussion. We have Mike Testa's lengthy letter. We have the CBD report itself. And so there's several different documents floating out there that I think each of the boards should have available so they could go through them and say, you know, these are really priority areas and this really isn't.
Well, I do support that, Steve. I'm just talking as far as these, well, maybe they do. Some Mike's talking points certainly.
Yeah, Mike's aren't necessarily translated into the code stuff.
That's right. That's right. I'm just I'm just wondering if we might be quicker if, and you can tell me because I wasn't on the board, but if those comments are already there and already sort of cataloged and ready to go, if we wouldn't be moving this ahead in a quicker way by incorporating those in another draft document, let's us or, you know, an expert here or whatever, you know, come up, our attorney come up with a draft document that incorporates what they've already said and what people are already talking about, then we have something to work from rather than a two-year-old or a year-and-a-half-year-old.
And some of the things in this document are not related to the CBD, they're residential and the like.
Right.
I mean, my sense of it is there are enough documents out there at the moment. What we have to do on our side of the table is siphonize them and come with a conclusion about what we want to do.
I'm just interested in focusing at this point, getting focused. You know, so we know what we're talking about and we move this head in a focused way. And I feel like we're kind of scattered here.
I completely agree.
I'm trying to simplify this, Mr. Mayor.
But I agree and I support that. There is a draft document that has been put together by the CBD committee that incorporates their work. And that's the next thing for all of us to get and read with care. And then the other documents that have been produced over time, planning comments, et cetera, are backup to that and reflect upon it.
I'm just one last thing. I'm just reluctant to add, to ask other volunteers, planning commission and zoning board members, to come and give more comments on something they've already commented on without already incorporating their thoughts into what we've been. I mean, it's valuable time for them. It's difficult to do.
Yes, my sense of it is the time to get them is when we have some opinion about what we've been given.
Okay.
That's my sense of it. Is there a caller?
Yes. This gentleman wants to ask a question about the what's going on soldiers and sailors. So do I?
Put it on speaker.
Speaker phone?
Yep.
Do I hang the phone up?
Just go on speaker. Hello?
Hello, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Bob, Bob Chiketti. I live at the Metro Co-op, next to soldiers and sailors field. My question is about the toilet and storage facility that's being built. Could you tell me when it's going to be completed? It's been almost six months now.
It's been a long time. In fact, we were just talking about that a little while ago, I think. Patty, I'll punt this to you, but am I correct? You thought it'd be finished by the end of October?
It should be finished by the end of October.
Right. Looks like we've got about another six weeks in total to have it buttoned up and finished. There we've had a series of problems that we didn't expect when.
I know that.
Yeah. But you're feeling pretty confident about October, Patty?
Yeah, it's in pretty good shape.
Well, let me answer this. Will you be doing landscaping this fall or next spring?
This fall.
Yeah, the intention is to do it this fall and assuming we get everything ready. I mean, do you think the landscaping will be in?
We're ready to start grading within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so ready to start grading within the next couple of weeks, so.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I just want to mention something. The Empire State Building was built in 13 months, so you think you can beat that record?
And that wasn't a prefab.
We've got another seven months to go. Hopefully we can. I share your frustration with this, especially since the initial idea was that it would be as close to a prefab as we could get, so.
Okay.
That it has not been.
All right, thank you.
Your patience is appreciated.
Bye-bye.
During the depression too. It was an amazing project.
Was that a shovel-driven project?
I don't know, but it was on Discovery.
Was that a water project?
Well, the History Channel even, what a great show that was.
All right. So before we move on to the resolutions, I just want to let people know what subjects we've talked about and will be talking about in work session. We spent some time earlier talking about the possibility of expanding the code to prohibit skateboarding in municipal parking lots. It's been an issue in a couple of places lately and we have not come to a conclusion of exactly how to proceed. We'll be getting some further feedback from a variety of sources, including kids and families as well as the police. As mentioned, we're talking about zoning code revisions and the list of possibilities that have been presented. We'll be talking about long-term capital planning for the refuse district. We're confronting a circumstance where we would have to buy one, possibly two, new garbage trucks in the next year or so to replace trucks that are aging. And we certainly would not want to do that without certainty that we are confident that we're doing the right thing to be maintaining our own sanitation function. There are many communities, Mount Pleasant being one of them, that outsource their sanitation activities. I don't say that to suggest that we have started this process with any certainty about what the interest should be and we have a lot of respect for the guys we have who do this work and do a good job of it, but we also have a responsibility to make sure that we know what the long-term costs are for either option. And so that's what we're looking forward to an analysis of. We had a discussion about the big stone wall up near Foxwood at the Foxwood Tennis Courts. Part of that long historic stone wall has weakened and we had to take a piece of it down. Repairing it is an expensive venture and we're looking at some options that might allow us to repair it at lower cost than the very substantial expense that looks like it would cost to rebuild it in its original form. And we also will have an executive session discussion about the Verizon franchise negotiations. As I mentioned in the past, we at long last have a contract before us from Verizon that outlines exactly what they would offer us and what they would ask of us. It does not include everything we have sought and a number of aspects of it remain frustrating. That said, it also represents some progress and we're at the point where I think we are likely to post it for public hearing and outline the terms to the community at large and get everybody's opinion and be able to air them freely, which has not been an option available to us so far. And we're also been talking about the potential sale of the old recreation center at Great Oak Lane and Bedford Road. We have extended the period of time when people are welcome to put in proposals for that building to October 30th. And we very much encourage anybody who might be interested in that building to contact Village Hall, to look at the website and pick up a copy of the RFP. As many people as we can get responding to it would be helpful both to ensure the future of the building and to maximize its benefit to the village. And then lastly, we're in the midst of discussions about contract negotiations, both for management employees and also for the police. Our police contract expired some time ago and we have continued to have negotiations with them about a renewal of the contract that thus far have not resulted in an agreement. of the contract that thus far have not resulted in an agreement. That said, time for resolutions.
Resolution 2009-174, resolved that pre-check register dated September 14, 2009, covering check numbers 642324 to 64490 has been reviewed and is hereby approved as listed below. General fund, $191,939.27. Miscellaneous revolving fund, $150. Water fund, $97,518.54. Capital fund, $6,768.95. Refuge fund, $13,560.78. Pool fund, $4,306.36. Trust and agency fund, $2,401.35. A total of $316,645.25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
The only comment I have, Patty, I mentioned this to you before the meeting, but we've got a bit of an inconsistency, it looks like, and I don't want to see the village money flushed down the toilet. Royal flush, we're being presented with a $600 bill, it looks like, here for the same time period, that three other royal flushes for that same time period, I assume are Porta Sands or $100.
Porta Sands.
So if you can figure out why there is that aberration at the Nantahagan Park, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Patty, I noticed telephone service from Broadview Networks. Is that the successor to Bridgecom?
No, they were here concurrently with Bridgecom. They had accounts with us that Bridgecom wouldn't accept, and then we still have a few Bridgecom accounts. There are some of these lines that are involved in telemetry and other types of things that are not phone lines, but they are alarm lines and the like that are still with some of these original companies.
Is there any way to clarify it and get it all under one umbrella?
We've tried. We're hoping that Verizon will take them on, but right now we've not been successful.
Great, these are our partners again.
Yeah.
They're so easy to deal with. They're going to come in and provide us with television service.
The $600 porta potty is Parkway, so.
It's what?
It's the $600 porta potty is Parkway Field, not Nantahagan.
They're real ones?
Yeah, no, the last one is Parkway, the last line. Nantahagan was at the top three or 100, right? So I don't know, there's only one at Nantahagan, at Parkway, right? Or did we get five more there?
They'll look into it.
Yeah, that's a good catch, Jonathan.
A proven subject that Patty double-checked.
I don't think it was music festival, but I'll have to check.
Maybe it was.
All right, double-check.
Could be part of that.
Okay. All in favor of 174, the check register?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Mindy?
A resolved that the board of trustees had reviewed the minutes of the meetings held on Monday, August 24, 2009, and Friday, July 4th, July 4th? No.
I'm sorry.
It was September 4th, right?
Yeah.
September 4th, 2009, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? One thing I wanted to note is that the meeting of September 4th is a special meeting at which we approve two new members of the planning commission, and they are volunteers from the community who offered to participate. One is Joe Petenza and the other is Paul Sohekin. Thanks so much to the two of those for stepping up to the plate to serve on the planning commission, and congratulations also to Russ Klein, longtime member of the planning commission and its new chair.
Could I ask, Patty, we had a discussion, this just reminds me, on August 24th, about Con Ed tree cutting, and we talked at that point about reviewing their work order permit and the possibility that we could issue a stop order. What happened?
We issued a stop work order the next day, and we need to schedule an opportunity for their manager for this particular region to come in and talk with the board about the aggressiveness and what went wrong and what we're concerned about. But since we did this, I think, late August and with the end of, you know, the summer season and holidays, we've not been able to get a date set aside.
They did change.
But they've called and asked to meet with us. They're under stop work.
All right, so Patty, if we can get him in, my thought would be if we can get him in for a work session discussion followed by a discussion where he can describe to the community at a televised session, not only the nature of their program, but hopefully the means by which they can respond to our concerns.
Seems that'll probably be October now, because we only have one more September meeting.
No, as long as we can postpone the carnage.
Right, we have.
I was going to, I was going to go out and try to take some pictures for them.
That would be great, Jonathan.
But if anybody out there has individual examples that they'd like to take and email to Patty.
We've gotten a call today from Ms. Chuah on Pleasant Avenue. Same thing, took a tree down behind her house and just the visual effects have been awful, so.
I think it would be, I think that's a great idea, Jonathan, and to be able to show some of that as we're having a public discussion.
Okay.
I agree.
That we could have on PCTV. This is an example of a tree that was, that we feel was, or an area that was just wiped out that we feel was very sensitively and unprofessionally handled. What went wrong here? Why did this happen? And what could be done to make this happen, not happen again, but that a situation that existed be resolved in a way that people are much more satisfied with.
We could piggyback those on the pictures that we have of Broadway, the houses on Broadway that, well, they knocked out the whole aqueduct there. And we had had a discussion with them after that to talk to us, which they did. However, they were just as aggressive at the second time around anyway, so.
And as we've said before, everybody understands that there's some compromises to be made and that maintaining a reliable electrical system is an important goal, but against being personally, and I think most everybody's in agreement, there have been any number of circumstances where I can't connect what they've done to a reasonable, logical compromise between the need for a tree canopy and the interest in living in a community with trees and the reliability and the power.
One more thing about the planning commission. You had mentioned the two new planning commission members, but also the outgoing Dan Sweeney, who served as the, came back after retirement and re-upped to, in order for us to fill out his positions, and we thank you, Dan.
And he suggested perhaps we should get him a little head on.
Yeah, to his plaque.
Throw an additional plaque or maybe something that would hang from a chain that would reflect the fact he's got a couple of additional months of service. So if you're listening, Mr. Sweeney, you heard that request.
An oak cluster.
We'll be, we'll be sending that request to the recognitions committee and we'll see what the result is.
First, we should.
First, recognitions committee.
Dan's service to the village in many, many ways, not the least of which was his many, many years of service on the planning commission. Fifteen years, I think, most of those years as his chairman was honored both at organization night, his official retirement, and also the other night, we had an opportunity to gather round him and toast him as well. So deeply appreciate all that.
Well, and it's also a very difficult thing to do, to be a part of village elections. And Dan was a, was a big part of many elections, and that's one of the reasons that the government works well, is because Dan was part of that and, and, you know, I think we're grateful to him for that.
If there are any aspects of it that don't work well, can we blame him?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Of course, we'll do that anyway.
He would say you do anyway.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right. Did we, did we vote on the minutes?
Yeah.
A second.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved. Jonathan?
Resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from Sunnyside Avenue residents to hold a block party on Saturday, April 26th.
September 26th.
Excuse me.
Pretty cold, yeah.
Stuck in the spring.
All over the place.
I'm not going to, I don't know. September 26, 2009, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Ryan?
Resolved that the board of trustees hereby approves, hereby accepts the donation from Carl Zeiss Inc. in the amount of $500 to go toward future community programs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Not quite sure how this arose, but the chief received a letter with a contribution of $500 from the Carl Zeiss Company, which has offices in Thornwood, right near the Rosel Shopping Center. Much appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
What does Zeiss Company do?
Is it a glass, is it a, is it a lens or a glass?
Optics.
Lenses, yeah. Yeah, did they make the lenses for the really nice cameras?
I believe so.
It's an international company, very well-known.
Binoculars.
Steve, 178.
Resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby approves a surplus in sale of the following village equipment. Carter Hoffman Flexer Refrigerated Well Unit with an opening bid of $2,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
I could use one of those.
Patty?
This is from the senior center. This is from the Clinton Street Center, right?
There's a few pieces of equipment there.
Sounds a little obscene, doesn't it?
This is a very expensive piece of equipment. It was obtained by the senior center under a fake grant several years ago when they were setting up the center, and they've never used it, never will. It's sitting there and it needs to be surplus.
It's like new?
It is like new. We don't have the canopy and the tray size. The picture you see there is not everything we have, but.
So this was a piece of food service equipment they envisioned needing and turned out not to?
That's right.
Well, how can we, where are we advertising this? Seems like this has some value.
We have a special municipal auction site that gets very wide circulation. We send all of our vehicles there now. We've done for other well with it, so we'll put this out there with a minimum bid and see what we can get.
Okay. Not on eBay?
Not on eBay.
We can't use eBay?
Well, we can, but the fees are high and, you know, the coordination is tough. We'd have to ship it usually.
How hard to send it UPS?
Yeah, it's heavy.
All right, all in favor?
500 pounds.
Aye. Motion approved. Mindy?
Resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby approves the proposal for Independent Testing Laboratories Inc., 120-11, 18th Avenue, College Point, New York, to provide soil borings/probes in conjunction with the Bedford Road Water Main Replacement and Drainage Improvement Project, as per the terms set forth in their proposal dated August 13, 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to explain this one?
One of the things that has to be done in order to do the design for the water main project is to do borings to see where there may be rock, and this is a specification for companies that do soil testing and borings. We've gotten two quotes, and the low quote is from this company called Independent Testing Laboratories, and it's recommended by PCI that we engage them to do the borings for this.
So their quote was not to exceed $14,500. The other quote was SNS Environmental Sciences, not to exceed $16,750.
Right.
And we have a letter from PCI, which is our consulting engineer, recommending that we accept this proposal from Independent Testing Labs, both based on the fact that it was a low bid and based on their review of their references and qualifications. This $14,500 is charged against the water fund?
It's charged against the water fund, yes.
So why are we, why are we not approving, approving an amount? We're just approving the acceptance of the bid, but don't, do we not have to approve?
You can do the not to exceed in the resolution, no?
Why don't we say not to exceed? Because in fact, that number, $14,500, is arrived at by adding up all these individual items in their proposal.
I have a question. I didn't understand what this is and I'm even more bewildered. We're going to go out and dig six borings. So $7,000 of boring. They're seven feet deep.
No, not $7,000 of boring. It's $14,000.
Excuse me, $2,000, $2,500 a bore.
Right.
We're going to.
A hole.
To figure out what the water table and the rock is.
And what the content of the soil is.
Well, do we care?
Well, we have to. It's required. Yeah, we do care because if we go out to a bid spec and we find out we have soil contamination or we have rocks, you know, there's going to be additional cost in the excavation and the laying of the pipes, and it may affect the budget for the project considerably.
Oh, okay, so we do need to test for, it's more than just where the rock is and the water table.
Right.
We also need to test for.
Some contamination.
You need to know what you're taking out the ground, then you need to know what you got to put back in to make a bed that's strong enough to support the pipe.
We'll be making representations in our bid that, you know, there aren't any conditions to be concerned about, that a contractor can go in and.
So even though we didn't even approve the project yet, basically, we have to do this because if we do approve it.
Because we may have to put in the bid specs that there's rock or there's contaminated soil.
So just so, this hasn't been approved as a project yet, so I think.
So what?
The question I have.
Again, yeah. We haven't approved the project, but we're going to spend $14,500.
Well, you've approved the design. There's no way we can do the design without knowing if there's contamination or rock. You've already, you've spent $85,000 on design work already. You've engaged PCI to do the design. This is part of that puzzle.
And I mean, as Steve has represented to us, we have no choice but to replace this oldest section. I want to know.
No, I understand.
And this was not included in PCI's.
You haven't gone out to bid yet, you know, but you'll have a document ready to go.
But was this amount included in, was this included in PCI's proposal to us? No?
No.
Why not?
Because this is, their proposal is for their engineering and design. It's not for.
Well, if they needed this to do the design, they shouldn't, wouldn't they have included that?
They excluded it. They gave you a list of things that would be included in their work.
The question I have about this, about the proposal, Patty, is PCI's cover letter says not to exceed $14,500. That number is arrived at by some extrapolation of the unit costs that Independent Testing provided in their proposal, right?
I believe so, yes.
But there isn't anything in Independent Testing's proposal that comes up with that number. I don't doubt that it's right based on these numbers, but for example, it says mobilization and demobilization of a truck-mounted drill rig and crew per diem is $850, but it doesn't say how many days are required. So presumably, that number, $14,500, came about because PCI queried that, right?
Yeah, there's a long email history on this. I didn't bother to provide the board with, but yes.
If you add up these numbers by themselves.
Six, seven-foot holes would take more than one day to do that.
If you add up these numbers individually, they don't produce $14,500.
No, that's why this was sent back to Indy back in August when I'd gotten this. It wasn't, it wasn't, it really wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison with the other.
I mean, I have.
And I told him we needed an upset price and he had gotten that.
But how did he arrive at? I don't see anything in the proposal from Independent Testing that would allow you to come up with the number $14,500 without information that presumably PCI got, but which is not documented here.
Well, it's $1,000 a sample.
It says that it's based on an eight-hour day.
I know, but it doesn't have the number.
And then overtime is one and a half times hour of daily rate, so that's all, the only reference in P C I time.
Patty, since by happenstance we have another regular meeting next week, can we table this?
Yeah, but I just have to bring PCI in because I've.
Well, why do you have to bring him in?
Because quite frankly, they need to explain it and it's, I have like a four-page email trail on this thing. This thing's been on my desk for a month and they're.
I don't want to, I don't want to pay PCI to come in. Independent Testing should give us a proposal that totals out the upset fee, shouldn't they? And we have all these unit costs, but it says traffic maintenance per diem, $575. We don't know how many days are involved.
Right.
Where did you get that?
On the.
I don't have that.
It was a separate.
Well, the other, SNS has an estimate of two days of drilling.
No, I don't have it.
Well, I don't see that we can approve it as is.
You should be able to give us a spreadsheet. It shouldn't be that difficult.
Right. I mean, PCI came up with these numbers and maybe they're in a position to do it, but it seems like we ought to be able to see what that number is. I mean, the alternative proposal, which was 16.5.
Well, it says two days on the bottom of one of their, one of their sections of cost. But again, that one isn't that clear either. You know, they have a lump sum for mobilization.
Well, I don't see that we could accept it this way.
I agree.
So is there more to table this?
Table. Motion so moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I read it.
One second.
You did, okay.
Okay, let's move on. 180. John?
Resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to publish a legal notice for a hearing on Monday, September 21, 2009, at 7:00 PM, with respect to summons issued pursuant to Chapter 176, junk vehicles.
Is there a second?
Second.
We, our code enforcement officer has issued a violation at 19 Sky Top Drive for more than one unregistered vehicle on site, and the mechanism by which this is adjudicated is a hearing before the village board. is a hearing before the village board, which would be Monday, September 1, at 7:00 p.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Did the resident request this, or is it just the mechanics or how it works?
It seems to be the way the code was written, and it's a little interesting that the village board would get involved in hearing a summons, but because it involves an action where if the person is found guilty, we are going to go on their property, seize property, and put a lien on the property for...
So we wrote a ticket?
That activity.
We wrote a ticket for $250.
We wrote several summonses for having junked vehicles.
And they haven't paid them?
They have not removed the junked vehicles, allegedly, and this is all, you know, you're gonna hear this, so, you know, you'll hear the charges.
Okay. The code reads that "in the event that a junk motor vehicle is not removed as prescribed, the village board trustees shall thereafter hold a public hearing upon legal notice thereof, duly publish an official village newspaper. After such hearing and upon making a determination that a violation of this chapter exists, the village board trustees may cause said junk motor vehicle to be removed from the premises and disposed of or destroyed, and direct that expense of such removal or disposition to be assessed against the property." So...
And the property owner's been notified and knows that this is going on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
They've acknowledged receipt of the summons.
All in favor? Did we vote already?
Yes, I think we voted already.
Right, okay. Brian, 181. That's one of the new... No, it's not one of them. It was the last one of the original pack.
Oh, again. So that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from Grove Street residents to hold a block party on Saturday, September 19, 2009, from 9:00 to 10:00, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
As you can tell from the length of time, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., the Grove Street block party is perhaps the big daddy, the big kahuna...
It's the place to be.
Of all village block parties.
I don't know, the next one may be pretty good, too.
Have a good time, all in favor?
Yeah, no, the next one's better, because they start at 4:00 a.m.
I think that would be a typo. Steve?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from Sarusland's residents to hold a block party on Saturday, September 19, 2009. Are we gonna change this from 4:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.?
4:00 p.m., yeah.
4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
My recommendation would be don't try to drive in the Village of Pleasantville on Saturday, September 19.